You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the October second twenty twenty four meeting of the La Porte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access la port county dot org.
Welcome, everybody, to La Porte County Commissioners Meeting Wednesday, October second at ten a m. If everyone would like to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Haney, present. Commissioner Grammerosa.
Present.
Chairman Rosicky.
Present.
All three here.
Consider approval of September or consider agenda.
motion to approve as presented. Oh, wait, wait.
Motion to add changing the Commissioners' meeting date from Wednesday, December fourth to Monday, December ninth at ten a m.
Okay, we'll be putting it under new business under B.
Yeah, second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider approval of September eighteen twenty twenty four minutes.
motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Consider claims of payroll.
Our Commissioners' payroll for the period nine twenty twenty four is in the amount of one million five hundred seven thousand three hundred eighty four dollars ninety six cents. Motion to approve payroll as presented. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. And then, if you, if I may, operating expense claims would be in the amount of one million eight hundred sixty three thousand six hundred seven dollars ninety eight cents. Motion to approve the claims is presented. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public comment. We're now open to public comment. Yeah. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Steve.
Good morning. Steve Hollifield, six, seven, eight, two east, one hundred south Mill Creek. On your agenda, you're going to consider the ban again. And as a farmer, as Township Board President, I spoke with our fire chief last night. I think it's very prudent that you guys continue this ban. We had some rain, but it's still a we're a long way from getting things damp enough where it's not dangerous. So I would just like that you consider that to keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment. Anyone else for public comment?
Yes, this is Tommy Kalabik from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm a Michigan City man. Good morning, distinguished and honorable county commissioners. I just want to pass the law through the end of October. Every Saturday morning between the hours of eight a m. at noon at Eighth and Washington in Michigan City, where today we always have our farmers market. I want everybody to get out and support our farmers market. Now Mayor Ed She tells us she's going to have to relocate the farmers market next year because they're going to be putting in workforce housing on that property where they have the farmers market. They're going to put about two hundred apartment units in there. And she wanted to have it at Pullman Park on the west side to kind of alleviate the food desert they have there. And now she said the collective is going to be taking that over. They're the ones that run the farm in Fort La Porte Farmers Market in Buffalo. So that way, you know, they can accept EBT and SNAP benefits, you know, for the people with the lower incomes. I also seen on the S R I website, you're going to be having another tax sale on October thirteenth. I've seen the list of properties that got some real good ones. You know, a lot of these houses, we need to get maybe buy some open lots for infill houses or you know, the people in Michigan City, they can have a place for their children to go play or have their families come over and have their picnics and barbecue. I seen old Earl Bergwald's house there at Greenwood and Kelly Metz. I might go come and bid on that, fix it up for one of my family members. You know, we all got that young adult that's driving us nuts. We finally want to get out of the house. But on that, I just want to say thank you very much. And hey, go Woes, beat the slicers a week from Friday night at homecoming Ames Field. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Harry Nun will close public comment. Moving on, department head comments.
Good morning, Council Commissioners. This is Mike Mullenhour, councilman, council member, and my address is fifteen ten Michigan Avenue, La Porte, Indiana. I'd like to read a statement. Mr. Councilman Cunningham couldn't make it this morning due to a
He's on Zoom.
He's on Zoom. Okay, good. Anyway, he couldn't make it this morning. I'm glad he's he's here that way. He's I'd just like to read his statement. And before I do that, I'd like to make a statement that I definitely support this, his statement completely. And I'll read it right now. The council by vote is requesting commission to the Commissioners to agree to extend read-only access to Lao at all to all council members. Just as the auditor reads access to the accounting software to do its this job, his job, so do we. There are dozens of reports that give us insight into the county's finances. Previously, it has been agreed that council members could come into the complex to access Lao. However, this requires us to do so during business hours. And some councilmen work day jobs and one lives about eighty miles, eighty minutes round trip journey to the courthouse. We would hope that you would remove barriers. This would be on a county-owned laptop that requires multifaceted authentication. Other officials have remote read-write access, meaning they can make changes. They can make changes, changes to the ledger remotely. We're asking we that for us to read only access. Fears of being hacked are overblown because that same risk applies to every user, whether they are on the on the site or remotely accessing the system. We want to empower our members to be able to come up with financial questions and quickly check into them by having access. Thank you very much. And I'd just like to add that I mentioned that I'm in complete support of this and I, for one, and I think there's plenty of others who I it's, I hate to admit this, but I kind of learned more at the council meetings for what the financial standings are than than being able. And I think this would really help me a lot. And I think it would help a lot of the other members to be able to have a better understanding of our finances. Right now, it's either to call a member on the finance committee, or like I said, we attend to a meeting and you learn what hopefully learn exactly where our finances stand. And there's nothing wrong with that, but it's it's kind of embarrassing at times when when you can't have that knowledge ahead of time. And I'd really appreciate it. And I think maybe Mr. Cunningham might want to make a statement. I'm not sure, but this was, I probably should have mentioned, and I think you knew of it, that this was voted on at our council meeting on Monday night. And I was one of the supporters also. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see Mr. Cunningham's hand up.
It looks like Earl's mic might be muted, but I'll join Councilman Mullenhour and Councilman Cunningham in saying that I support us having increased access to Lao. I'm the councilman that lives eighty minutes round trip away from the courthouse. I live in the cross, the furthest municipality from from the courthouse. And being able to run reports is
I'm sorry to to interrupt, but aren't you actually in New York?
At the moment, I am. And one of our other councilman colleagues is in Florida today for to deal with business and others in Chicago. All of us are all over at different times. Some of us have traveled for vacation. And so being able to have remote access is part of us being able to continue to do our job remotely sometimes. We, you know, having this access is what makes it possible for us to run reports that are sometimes more detailed. We have ideas outside of normal business hour that we want to be able to check into. Two of you are former councilmen, so I'm sure you can appreciate that. There's moments late at the night when you think, gosh, I wonder what that ledger would tell me if I could go look at it right now. And being able to do that at all hours is part of us being able to do our job. I know there's been concerns about security as Councilman Mullenhour read. Multi-factor authentication is an option. I think one member had talked with Darlene about this. These are on county-issued laptops that are only used for county business, and they're already through, I believe there's an option for a VPN so that all of that traffic is being routed through the county's firewalls already. Other county officials have access to Lao and they have remote access where there's read-write access. So if they actually get hacked, the damage would be far worse than someone being able to just read ledgers. So again, we're trying to remove barriers for the council, make it so that we have access to these financial reports and can do our job more effectively. And we'd ask that you guys consider taking a vote to to grant that access to us. So thank you for your consideration.
Earl, have you
Thank you, President Grammerosa. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I would agree with everything that Justin just said. And keep in mind that both Justin and I are going to be gone in January. And one of the things that bothers me is I go through and prepare for a meeting and like Monday night, we walked in and our agenda changed from six pages to seven pages and some new financial information. There was considerable amount of financial information that even came out right during that meeting. So I think anytime we have more access, let's just make better decisions. I think Mr. Mullenhour said it very well. Sometimes we look pretty foolish because we're getting stuff at such a late, a late date or last minute. And I just want to, and I appreciate the fact that two of you have already been Commissioners. I think you understand that sometimes you feel like you're in the dark trying to make a decision. We're in a pretty much of a crunch right now with a timeline for the budget. And I know that there's going to be times when we should be working on this every moment that we have free. And I certainly would appreciate your consideration. I just think it, as Justin said, it's a great term. It frees up. Knocks down some barriers instead of making it harder. Makes it easier for councilmen to do their jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Mr. Mullenhour for reading my statement. I wasn't sure I could get on.
Thank you. Well, I would make a motion to grant the council members remote read-only access to the Lao software. As as other council members have mentioned, they they were already, there's remote access by a number of different employees. Obviously, when we went through COVID, there were the COVID lockdowns, there were massive amounts of users who are accessing this remotely as well. And their access as read-only, there's really the most minimal amount of exposure there, especially considering, as the other council members have pointed out, how much read-write access is out there for other employees in the county and various offices.
We need to discuss that with our attorney.
I think the problem is, you know, well, we have a motion on the floor. Would you like to second it so then we can have a discussion?
I have a question. Well, I'd second it, but yeah, I have a question.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, and it's open to discussion.
I believe this is something we need to discuss with our attorney.
Ask the question, Rich. About granting a remote access to the Lao. Right. So I mean, clearly, the clearly, the members of the council have the ability to access the Lao system. So the only issue has to do with security. I did send Darlene an email after Monday's meeting, ask her again if she would speak with Lao to find out if there's any concerns or prohibitions to doing that. If you if you all decide that you want to go ahead and do that, I would make, you know, that the council members would have to, you know, agree that they only using a county laptop, that they're not using their personal laptop, that their wives, that other people get into and that they're going in with a secure VPN. Because those are the areas on Wi-Fi where you where somebody can get in there and and deal with the stuff. And that would only be if, you know, if Lao, you know, if Lao says that it's not a security risk and they're able to go ahead and do that.
You know, my main
Any other questions?
I do, because I'm and or maybe it's more of a statement. A while back, we had a councilperson come to the commission and just throw something at us two or three hours before a meeting. And then, when it didn't work out to their favor because they didn't ask for the proper things, they turned around and they said it was our fault because we didn't correct them or tell them the right way in order to request it. And we do these meetings every two weeks. This was not something that was put up on our agenda. It was not something that we have a clear discussion with other department heads. We are not able to call Lao and you want us to vote on it right now. So the same things that the council is saying that they come up into these meetings and they're clueless because they haven't sat and talked to the auditor and figured out what their accounts are prior to the meeting. You want us to quickly make a decision right now through department heads on giving access to a financial system because you believe that it's secure. Well, it was through that same system, our laptops and our computers that we were scammed for two thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars and thirty eight cents. We lost that money and it is the taxpayers who lost because that was money that was designated for the highway department and that is less potholes that we are filling this year. The council has not came back with a solution and said, well, let's figure out how we're going to replace that money to the highway department for potholes. The auditor hasn't made that suggestion to replace that money to that department. And so, again, I can only speak for myself. I would be against taking a vote for this at this point because we're rushing something through.
I believe we need to hear from Lao. It's their system.
Well, it's our system, but we need to
Yeah, but it's So if I'm hearing my fellow Commissioners properly, because of your concerns about remote access to Lao, are you then suggesting that we should remove remote access for all the other employees and department heads here this morning?
No, sir. What I am saying to you is that this is something that just got brought up a few minutes ago. And I am not going to rush into a vote. If you want to have the vote, I know how I'll vote for this.
No, 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 my
We can vote on it?
So no, my my point is that if the council people are going through all the other step, same security steps and hoops that the other department heads and and employees have to jump through, why? Where is the discrepancy there? I'm trying to figure out where the where it's okay for a county employee or county department head to access remotely with read-write access, but it's not okay for a councilperson with read-only access to not be allowed to access. I mean, the council's primary and main purpose is finances and to deny them access to the finances is I'm just trying to figure out if if your concerns are security-wise, why aren't your concerns also the same for the department heads and employees who are already accessing it remotely? Why are where's the difference there?
So again, just because just because you're saying that it's it's supposed to be true, correct? Because you also put out a press release saying that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars was was taken out of employee funds in employee healthcare. And then it turned out to be a lie.
No, it was taken. It was taken out. We were able to recover some of it, but initially, six hundred fifty thousand was. You remember how you spent months trying to keep us from getting the documents?
Sir, just because you say
Point of order. Can we return to the subject at hand, please?
That's a good point. Quite simply, I agree, Mr. Director.
We can call
Why is it okay for a county employee who's not elected or a county department head who's not elected have to have access? But it's not okay for a councilperson. It doesn't make any sense. They the exact same security is there for either one. So if you're going to grant, if it's going to be granted for one, why not the other? It doesn't make sense unless you're purposely trying to hide something from the council.
Here we go again.
Well, Mr. Haney, I just don't know how something could be hidden from the council because the council has access to the information. The issue is whether they have to come to the actual physical structure of the buildings or whether they can do it from home. I mean, because any any council member can go into a computer on on the property and do it. So I think it's the remote access, not actually the information. That's the issue.
Sure. So, Mr. DiMartino, do you think there is any greater security risk for a employer department head to access it remotely versus a councilperson?
That's really not in my, I'm not an internet security person. That would be something that you'd have to bring up with I T or Lao as to that. I just I just don't know.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, if people are going to go ahead and do it, access it on their phone and they're out at Starbucks, I think there's a problem, you know, so.
Sure. I see Mr. Cunningham's hand is up.
Mr. Cunningham.
That that was my, the point of the argument was that we have some, and there probably will be more in the future, that work days, so it makes it almost impossible for them to get there between eight and four councilmen. And we also have some of the best work sometimes is done at two o'clock in the morning. You start thinking about something, say, well, let me look that up. My point is, and I think Mr. Haney has picked up on it as well. We have, I don't think you guys even know how many people have access. And they're not, we're not asking for a read and change. We're asking for read-only. Right now, Mr., I'm sure Mr. DiMartino would agree, we're in a pretty tight crunch time-wise and numbers-wise to get a budget put together that is in kind of shaky position right now. We still have several months of bills to pay. Getting our budget ready for twenty five is going to be dependent somewhat on how much money we have to carry over. And and it looks like there's not going to be a lot to carry over.
Well, can I ask, can I ask this? Would there be a compromise where we could grant access through the through the budget process? I'm just bringing it up. And that way, by that time, Lao can look into the issue. Just give restricted, I don't know if that, you know, if that's the issue, or if that's even on the commission's, you know, table or what they want to do with that, but.
I would I would follow by adding that Councilman Cunningham's comments are exactly correct in that we are going through a budget process right now. We are presently on track. Our current budget that we're about to advertise has us spending about five million dollars more than we're going to bring in revenue next year in the general fund. That's a problem that we have to address. And in order to address it, we need to be able to look at that data extensively in order to work through that. I wanted to address also, I know there's some concern about this coming up as kind of a surprise. This was brought up at our council meeting on Monday, so we're only two days later. We're not trying to surprise you or anything or throw this at you abruptly, but I mean, you frequently get requests from department heads of asking for various things that aren't on the agenda as well, and so do we. And I mean, I can respect the decision to take time to think about this, but we are also under the gun of trying to get a budget prepared here.
So is this the first time you're doing a budget? Is this the first time that the council actually did a budget that we're at the eleventh hour and you're in a crunch?
No, I mean, this has been an issue in prior years as well. And the ability to respond to it is just dependent on the resources that we have.
It's the first time, I've been on the council my twelfth year. And it's the first time that I've seen the numbers coming into the last couple of months of the budget that I'm seeing now.
So again, you you have a crisis and now, you know, it gets brought to the commission.
The crisis has been happened this week. It's just that it was brought up this week that maybe this will
Members of the Congress, we're asking for your help in resolving it. That's why we're here.
Thank you.
So.
I'd just like to make a comment with Mr. Cunningham just mentioned is I've been on the council for this is my eighth year. And it's always been a little difficult, but it just seems like it's much worse this year with all these numbers coming in so not late, but it's just different. And we are in a big crunch. And I know, I think, and I don't expect you to make a rash decision. I know there's a lot of things that question here, especially security. I don't blame you a bit. We know there's always a problem there. And I think I think it can be handled. And in fact, they know it could because I think our councilmen are all responsible enough to to be careful with with that. But this, I know this, when they gave us a stack of, the auditor gave us a stack of these numbers right before the council meeting that that's really difficult to start going through all of them and try and try and decipher things. And I know I'm retired and I can come up here during the day, but sometimes it's pretty difficult. And sitting at home in the evening, nothing better to do except watch TV. And we all know that that there's not a lot on TV. There's a lot there, but sometimes not too interesting. And I think it would, that would be the time to sit down and be able to concentrate and decipher some of this. So that's just my opinion and
Why did you get that stuff the night of the meeting? Why didn't you get it earlier?
Sometimes it's not ready earlier, I don't think, or within just hours or days. So I guess the auditor would have to answer that more than me, but
Because I was also on the council for eight years, eight beautiful years of my life. We always have our stuff. We had our stuff early, so you could look it over. You had your packet early, so you could look it over and know what was going on.
We get a
Till that day.
Yeah, we get a packet, but a lot of times there's not everything in it, so.
Yeah, we get to pack it out about a week before, six days before usually Tuesday, sometimes Wednesday.
But then there's a lot of additional information coming just like the other night.
And there's also last-minute additions to the agenda that
Correct.
Happened as well.
But that's my my opinion, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Well, I know there's a motion in a in a second on the table. We can
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Can I make a suggestion to amend the motion that all of this be done only with the I T department verifying if they can put in enough authentication numbers, codes and so forth. It's as secure as we can possibly be, even if we're in the county, in the in the council quarters.
Yeah, I was about to amend the motion to say this would be contingent upon approval of I T department after they've talked to Lao.
I think that's perfect. Thank you, Mr. Rosicky.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
I'll second that amendment.
Open for discussion, and I'll tell you, I now you're putting all the responsibility on one department. And if something goes wrong, then it's that department's fault. And I I just know in my personal opinion, I'd rather table this and then investigate it, even if we have to come back in a day or two and have a special meeting just on this issue. But I don't like the idea of coming up here and rushing this through with any kind of provision or provisions or anything so that this would give us the ability to talk to the vendors, find out what the security is. And then, instead of shifting the responsibility, I mean, I don't want to talk about how we came to this point, but obviously budgets are made every single year. And now something's gone wrong and their their emergency now becomes filters onto the commission and we have to hurry up and make a rash decision because somebody else had poor planning. And so I'm uncomfortable with making a rash decision like this. I would much rather come back later. It doesn't have to be two weeks from now. There's been other things that we get the ability to really look into it and then we can come back and we can have another meeting. So.
Well, it sound with with Mr. Commissioner Rosicky's amendment to the motion, the council people would be subject to the same security requirements that everybody else who's already accessing the system are remotely. So I don't see why a councilperson would be any less responsible or secure than than any of our other employees or department heads who are already accessing remotely.
I don't know who all has, who all has access to Lao at this point. I don't know.
To give us the ability to find it.
But but that's not on our, that's not what we're discussing here. The thing is, this is something that was brought to us today. We could have had a chance to talk about it earlier, but this is new to me. And I got a lot of questions about it, and I think that it wouldn't, maybe I should rephrase my amendment, that it would still be the Commissioner's decision. But I think Commissioners need to talk with I T, who needs to talk with Lao so that we know that it's okay with them, it's okay with I T, and it's okay with the Commissioners. So I withdraw my I withdraw my and withdraw my amendment and withdraw my second, and I would make a motion that we table this for further investigation. That's my so we can talk about it.
I'd like to withdraw my thank you.
I'll step down and second that. And we can always have another meeting. This way we can investigate and figure out how this works. So we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay. I'd, I'd like to make, to, given the security concerns.
Discussion is over because we've already voted.
Okay. Moving on from granting access, I would like, given the concerns that my fellow commissioners here have just expressed about security concerns and remote access, I'd like to make a motion to suspend all remote access to Lau pending further investigation.
I think that's a great point, because I just heard Mr. Marzinski say he doesn't even know who's on remote access. Thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor.
I'm not going to suspend something that's already been working without knowing who we're affecting and how we're affecting. So throwing out the baby with the bathwater there for that. Let's talk.
We have a motion. We have a second. We have a motion. Do we have?
There's no second yet, so no discussion, please.
Hearing no second dies for a lack of second. Moving on. Department heads' comments are open.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Jay Sullivan, the county engineer. And as you're, everyone's a little aware that we had Bridge Thirty Nine had to be closed because of damage. And I do have two engineering quotes for design of the, affixed to that problem. And they were both through our on-call agreements with the engineers. One is through Lock Mueller. And their quote was fifty, I got it here. On page, I'll go with USI first. I have it right here. USI had a quota forty three thousand eight hundred dollars for design of the fix for the bridge. And Lock Mueller was fifty excuse me, fifty seven thousand seven hundred for the design of the fix for the bridge. I do have one preliminary quote. It, it's a good quote from the port construction. And to construct the, of course, the design may change a little bit, but there's, the design's pretty well set. It's not going to change a lot based on what the requirements are to get the bridge fixed. And their quote for construction would be about a hundred and forty five thousand dollars. That would include some pilings, some I-beams, and some rubber bracing, a rubber interface between the bottom of the bridge and the I-beam to absorb some of the shock and stuff.
Thanks for your work on that. That's, these things that come up, wow, that was a surprise.
Well, it was. And, you know, we do inspect the bridges every two years. And if the inspection consultant determines that the bridge is deteriorating, then they move up to a yearly schedule. And this wasn't, it just deteriorated really fast. From two thousand twenty to twenty four, it really deteriorated in a hurry. And it's, it is what it is, but.
Make a motion that we use the on-call with the lowest bid.
Do we?
Get it done.
We have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Then we'll open up for discussion.
Sure. I, I don't know if Commissioner Marzinski is able to make that, make that motion with the, with the conflict of interest there with his being representative of that company.
It's nothing to do with that department.
Okay, so we, we have a motion on the floor. We have a concern that there might be a conflict of interest. Guy D. Martino, could you help us with what constitutes a conflict of interest?
So I'm assuming, Mr. Marzinski, that you did a conflict of interest statement?
I sure did.
And somebody in your family works at USI?
Yeah, but.
Would she derive any benefit out of a county contract?
Nothing to do with this, with this bridge at all. And you're looking at a difference of thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars here, by the way. Not a thing.
I, I, I don't see an issue. It's been disclosed.
Yep.
There's no pecuniary gain going to Marzinski or, or anybody in his family. I, I just don't see.
I'll, I'll second that motion, as I do have a question. Mr. Sullivan, you, you mentioned they're inspected every two years, you said, but then you referenced two thousand twenty. What, what did the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two report show?
Yeah, the twenty twenty report didn't have the bridge listed in our top fifty bridges to be constructed. Twenty twenty-two raised it number seven on the list. And they just did, that was twenty-two, they just did the inspection for twenty twenty-four, and it was bad, so they had to shut it down immediately. And.
In the twenty twenty-two, what did, what was the result in the?
It, it was number seventh on our list to get rehabilitated.
So it went from twenty twenty not being on the list.
Right.
And jumping in two years.
Right.
To number seven.
Yes, that's correct.
To forcing us two years later to close it down.
Yes, absolutely.
So when it was number seven, at what number do they, what number do we decide to move it up the list? Is there like the top three, the top five?
Well, we work, we work on the schedule that they give us for bridge reconstruction, and we try to do two bridges a year. And we'd look at the bridges that are on the, you know, the top two, the top four, and those are the ones that we work on, you know, try to get funding for every year. And there was two that were determined by, you know, by the list that were ahead of that. Those are the ones we got for, for last year. And then this year, we put in two other bridges that were in bad shape. So this one was not on our list to be done this year. It was, this coming year, we were going to do it. We had it on our, our schedule along with another bridge. It was one eighty was the number of that bridge. So it, it was in the works, but it just deteriorated to the point a lot faster than what everybody thought in us particular.
So there's six other bridges that were worse than this one?
According to their, yeah, according to their information, in twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-two, there were six other bridges that were worse than this, this one, yes.
Wow.
This year, obviously, no.
I, I don't understand how a bridge goes from not being on a list to number seven.
I, if you look at the pictures, I guess I can understand it. I did show, well, you had a report, I kind of printed it. I don't know if everybody got it. I think everybody got it. But if you look at the twenty twenty-two pictures, it really isn't, it doesn't look that bad. I mean, it's.
Actually, the twenty twenty-two pictures, I did go and I viewed them, and actually, they did not take pictures from under carriage. So pictures were taken from a distance. They only took from the top. And so again, I wonder, I, I still question the fact of how it went from not on a list to number seven to two years later deteriorating completely.
I would, I, I would.
And really, they, they should have, if they had questioned on the bridge in twenty twenty-two, they should have scheduled it then to be inspected in twenty twenty-three. Because they would, they could have, they have the option of changing the inspection routine. If, if, if they deem the bridge is in, you know, in deterioration, they can request that that be changed to a yearly inspection instead of, you know, to every two-year inspection. And that wasn't done either, which made me think that they didn't think it was a concern, but it obviously turned into a big concern.
So.
Location of that bridge, you've got a farmer on each side with big, heavy equipment.
Right.
Which is the majority of the traffic there, I would imagine, maybe a school bus, but there's a lot of really heavy farm equipment there.
When we were out there, the tomato trucks were using that bridge for access. They're picking tomatoes, and that's, you know, there was a lot of trucks that were going over there.
So for clarification, I know, because I, I talked to the school district, there are three buses that pass by there in the morning and three at night, the same three pass at nighttime. So this was, this is a safety concern.
Yes.
We have three busloads of children, nine months out of the year, going past this bridge. We have to do something, and we have to make sure that these bridges are being inspected. I don't know if we can flag them when they're, when we have that amount of children going past that bridge or not. I know that and we, we did have a meeting about this. There were a lot of concerns. Can you kind of explain how many bridges we sent out for inspections? And then what is the role of Highway in assisting? Do we actually have Highway go out and assist? Or are we solely relying on this company, this on-call company, to do this for us? And we're where we are right now?
Yes, we have a hundred and eighteen bridges in the county that need inspection. The majority of them are every two years. We have, of course, the Franklin Street Bridge is an exception to the rule. I mean, it has to be annual, it has to be done by a special inspection crew, not even the consultant we hire, because it's, you know, it's a, it's a different bridge. The consultant review the bridges every two years. They got a cycle. Some of them are, you know, reviewed this year, some will be next year. And it's a four-year contract with them to do that. And we, the county does have, and I, I made a list. Each year I give to the bridge foreman of general maintenance. They list the maintenance that needs to be done. We've done riprap, we've done some other things that, to bridge to help, you know, as long as you have to have it. We even put on some, you know, some decking and different things. But the construction and the safety of the bridge, we rely on the consultant for that. They're certified for that. It takes a, a special certification through, you know, federal highway department to get that certification. So we rely on them to report the condition of the bridges. And then they give us a list of the priority of what bridges need to be, you know, rehabilitated. And in what year, usually they give us the year to, you know, we'd like to get that done.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Jay. Roughly two years ago, there was an issue with the bridge up by Michigan City, that kind of south area, just south of Blue Chip off of, what is that, twenty there? I can't remember that side street. There was an issue with a bunch of, with that bridge there, a bunch of graffiti, I remember.
And the sidewalk too. We're, we're, we're working on the sidewalk and trying to get that done.
Yeah. And this, I, I'm pretty sure I don't, if you could get me that twenty twenty-two report on Bridge Thirty Nine, I would appreciate it. I don't, I don't recall.
Sorry, I'll email it to all the commissioners, but I will definitely get it to you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I believe it's the same company that did the inspection on that bridge as well, where those photographs as well were years, well, in that case, those photographs were years out of date because some of that graffiti on the underside of that bridge had been there for at least five years, and I think those pictures were six or eight years old from then. The, the, the low bidder on this, normally I'm always, I'm inclined to go with the low bidder, but unfortunately, in this situation, the, the low bidder is the same company here that obviously inspected the bridge two years ago. They were the company, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, the same company from Michigan City where those pictures were years and years out of date, that they initially proffered as current pictures. And of course, that bridge, Bridge Thirty Nine, right now, there's literally a hole underneath that pylon. You could fit an entire basketball through.
Completely deteriorating.
It's completely deteriorated at this point. You could literally a gap this big between.
And part of the reason, in, in my opinion, why it deteriorated so fast, the pylons are supposed to be filled with concrete. And this one, if it was filled with concrete, it deteriorated very rapidly to the point where it's, it's sand.
Sand.
It's like sand, and there was no reinforcement underneath there, you know, with the concrete. The concrete takes a lot of the vertical force. The, the pylon will take some of the vertical force, and mostly it's for the horizontal force and to keep the concrete in place. And without the concrete there, that, that steel just deteriorated very rapidly.
Very quickly.
You know, when that bridge was built, how many years ago?
Nineteen eighty-four.
Eighty-four?
Yes.
And who built it?
I do not. I, I tried to find that information, and I, I could not find the information of who designed it or who built it. I do have a lot of information that we dug up over the last few years on a lot of the bridges, but we don't, I couldn't find anything on that one. I could do some more digging, but I don't know at this, we did.
Well, I just want, if the county paid for concrete and we got sand instead, I'd like to know who built the bridge.
And, and the other pylons that they did check to make sure, and the, the ones that they did check, I'm not sure they can get access to all of them because they are, you know, encased in, in steel and they're but they see they had, they were concrete reinforced. This one was not, the one that deteriorated really badly.
I'll be there.
And I'd like to see, just, you know, we're looking at a bridge that's forty years old. And, you know, the, because I did go out there and I did, you know, we saw the sand and everything else. I don't think that there's much we can do with, with how it was built. It probably would have benefited, like, we, we can't go back and figure out who did the inspections at that time to figure out why it wasn't, you know, if it was concrete and it deteriorated down to sand. You know, there's no way of us going back and, and investigating and figuring out, but we do know that it's a major problem. We do rely on our on-call inspectors to make sure that, you know, and this is why we, we hire inspectors to make sure that we're getting what we're supposed to get. We can't go back forty years and try to figure, resolve this. Is there a way, I, I equally have the same concern as Mr. Haney, as Commissioner Haney, that, that the inspector should probably not be doing the plans for us at this point until we can kind of sort out and figure out what, what's going on. And then for future moving projects forward, we have to put something in place where we are investigating and making sure that they are getting under the bridge and really inspecting that. I don't think that it should have deteriorated in a two-year period that bad. And I do know, in talking to Highway and, and some of the supervisors out there, there was another concern because we kind of had like a drop where the concrete met, met the pavement. And there were some concerns brought up about a year ago, and we addressed those.
Yes.
So is there a way of going back to Lock Mueller and, and finding out why it's such a big discrepancy? And if, if they would, you know, so there, so we, so that the public understands what we're asking for, are two things here. We're asking for the two on-call inspectors to actually give us a plan how we're going to repair it. And then we're also looking at Laporte Construction for the hundred and forty five thousand dollars to actually do the work and do the repair. And so I don't think that the repair is so much an issue, but right now, just trying to get a plan on how we're going to fix it. So can we, can we get that number closer?
I'll, I'll get ahold of them. And I just got that this morning, actually, from Lock Mueller. And I, I went through their list, looked everything over, and I, we, we're taking some of the items off that list. I can do the permitting, and we're going to do the inspection. That saves us about thirty grand on some of the items. But I will, I can get with them and see if they can reduce some of the light items that we went ahead and we're going to accept forward.
So I would make a suggestion, and I'll, I'll step down as the president, and I'll make a motion, because again, I, I think it's important that we address this quickly. So I think the motion should be for you to go, we would approve, like, not to exceed, say, the fifty, fifty-eight thousand for the planning, and then the hundred and eighty-five thousand, a hundred and, excuse me, forty-five thousand for the actual repair, and give you permission to go to the council and request the money or, or the spend. And then, in the meantime, see if you could get that number down and, and figure out. But that would be my opinion and my motion. Just to move the project forward.
So is that, are, are you moving to amend Mr. Marzinski's motion, which is currently on the floor?
Yes.
And it would. Is there a second to the amendment?
What is the amendment?
The amendment would be to see if we could get, to, so that he can move this forward. He's, we've got to move this project forward. So we have to today give permission for him to go before the council to, to ask for the spend. And so what I'm asking, I'm asking is that we go ahead and give them approval for Lock, for the Laporte Construction at the hundred and forty five thousand dollars to actually physically do the work. And then it's between the other two on-call providers to, to actually do the planning. And in order to do the planning, just so that he could get on the agenda, because I believe that the auditor's office is requiring, when is your cutoff? Tomorrow, today, Friday?
I would have to ask my staff from the cut office.
So you don't know what the cutoff is to get in on the October meeting right now? No.
No.
Okay.
I would assume there's at least another seven days, I would think. Yeah, it's not.
Diane, are you, do you know when the cutoff is? Because I know that you.
If I can just add one thing.
Uh, if I can just add one thing, if I can't get, uh, Lock Mueller to come down in price, um, we don't have, we, those are the two consultants we have on-call agreements with. But I can go to another consultant and maybe get a price from them. You don't have an on-call. And it wouldn't be, the money hadn't been appropriated. We, on the on-call, the money's already been appropriated by council for that, but I'd have to get then more money appropriated for a different, we could maybe transfer money from, you know, the on-call to one of these. I'm just, just suggesting that if I can do that, and, cause I don't know if Lock Mueller will come down to that amount. And if they can't, then I might have to go somewhere else. That's, that's my concern.
I would, I, I would make an amendment to the, uh, to the amended motion and to give you, uh, authority to go out and seek additional quotes. If needed.
And I'll second that.
So rather than take the low bid, we're going to ask the high bid to come down? And if they can't, we're gonna go get a third one and hope that they'll be lower? Is that what we're doing? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what.
Okay, well, the problem we have is the inspect, the inspector is who comes in with the lower bid to come up with the plans. But if, if it was inspected and not inspected and we didn't catch this through the inspections, how do we use that individual, how do we use that company to give us plans on how to fix it?
I, I, I would echo Commissioner Graham Rose's concerns there. We, generally speaking, we don't encourage and reward, uh, bad behavior with, uh, additional incentives.
I'm not saying it's bad behavior.
Potential, potential bad behavior. We're, we're, we're looking at here as, as, at, at least as a board from where I sit, uh, an, an organization that's had a couple of different issues now with bridges come up just in the past two years.
I'm not gonna.
Where it's, I, I, I don't know exactly what's going on with that, if they're just accidental slip up, what's happening? But there, something's going on to cause these inspection reports to not apparently appropriately reflect the condition of the bridges as they're in. And like I said, this isn't the first time we've, we've had some sort of issue. This is obviously the biggest. But, um, it's, it's concerning to me and obviously to, uh.
So you got a pier that was supposed to be filled with concrete, it got filled with sand instead. It deteriorated quicker. Whose fault is that?
Again, I'm not an engineer. I'm not gonna put the engineer on the spot here. We're looking to move this project forward. We have three busloads of children. We are going, we are currently in, um, school mold right now and we have these buses being rerouted. This is, you know, this is something that we have to attend to quickly. Do you have a resolu- do, would you suggest anything to us, uh, Mr. Di Martino? Is there any other way that we can go about?
Well, and I understand your concerns. If, if you have a concerns with the consultant that did that, you can feel free to go with the higher, the higher bid. You're, you're entitled to do that if you really have concerns about the work. I probably, probably need to sit down with the consultant, or you can go ahead with what Mr. Sullivan and his planning on doing, which is going ahead and seeing if he can get them to reduce the bill so they can be equal with the other, with the other vendor. Or you can go out and get another one. So, uh, those really are, are the options.
Yeah, and I, I, I think the motion that we have on the floor now covers all those bases.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can I answer your question?
Sure.
The advertising deadline, if, if an additional appropriations needed, I'm sure he's spending his own money or what, would be tomorrow.
Okay, so which really?
Would the additional appropriation too, we, now there's money in Kew Ridge to take care of this, but it would be, so would that be an additional too? Um, and, and the on-call then?
Do you already have money appropriated?
There's money in Kew, Kew Ridge to take care of this. It, it hasn't been designated toward this bridge, but it is in Kew Ridge for.
We can appropriate it, the, the deadline's tomorrow. We can get it advertised, uh, probably and, uh, so that it's, uh, if it's needed, it can be used.
Then the other question I would have is there is money appropriated for on-call agreements with the two engineering firms, or if you do go with another one, there is a contract with these two firms for the amounts on the on-call. I don't know, maybe, uh, the lawyer, you, you explain this a little bit better.
I, I think I have a good way to, but, Mr. Sullivan, I think I have a good way to, to handle, uh, what your next concern is gonna be. I say vote on the motion on the floor and then I'll make a second motion, uh, after that to clear that up if needed. And then that way, they can always just vote it down at the next meeting if they don't need it in the council, but it's on there anyways.
Yeah, cause I know there was money appropriated, but I didn't know if, since there was contracts in place for these two consultants, if you could actually transfer money out of that to.
No, you can't do that.
Do that, I didn't know until I was concerned about. We can, uh, there are already contracts in place, two consultants.
We'll make a second motion for that. I'll make a second motion for that after this vote.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor.
What is the motion now?
Can you repeat it?
The motion I made was to we use the on-call for the lowest bid. Is that what we're voting on?
Uh, the motion was amended by Commissioner Graham Rosa and then again amended by myself. Uh, the motion as it stands, as, as, as I believe is to authorize our county engineer to, um, to, uh, seek, uh, to seek contacting Lock Mueller and see if they can do, uh, any better on the price. And also give him permission to seek additional quotes if he feels that's needed. Uh, and, um, approve Laporte, uh, construction for a hundred forty-five thousand, up, up to a hundred and forty-five thousand for repairs. Uh, the total amount not to exceed for those consulting fees, uh, as Commissioner Graham Rosa put it, was fifty-eight thousand. And then, um, you have permission to, uh, approach, uh, the council for anything that you need.
Okay, so I can then appro- I can put the money together then, cause I need to get it in today for the, you know, on the council's meeting then, for the fifty-eight thousand and also for the construction amount that was.
Yeah, and you can put the amount, the largest amount, you know, not to exceed. And hopefully while you're out there, you can get something a little bit lower.
Okay.
You have to tomorrow close the business.
Is that, um, good, Mr. Di Martino? How we've worded it? You're, you're muted. You're muted.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Um, moving on.
Thank you.
Just to clarify that, I, I'll make, I'll make a.
We've already voted. Oh. Another motion?
Yeah, yeah, just, just a motion that, um, to give you permission for any additional appropriation or, uh, monies that you may need to seek from the council from any source, uh, you need derived, uh, to get on their, to be able to get on their next agenda for the not to exceed fifty-eight thousand for engineering and a hundred and forty-five thousand for repairs.
Okay, repairs.
I'll step down from president and second that motion. Any discussion?
Repeat the motion.
Uh, it's authority for the county engineer to approach the council for, uh, up to fif- up to fifty-eight thousand, uh, dollars in engineering fees if needed, as well as up to a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for, uh, construction repairs on the bridge, uh, from, uh, whatever sources, uh, derive for additional appropriations.
Okay.
So we got a bid of forty-eight, forty-three thousand eight hundred and we're gonna ask permission to not to exceed fifty-eight thousand.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so.
It's new territory here.
We have a motion and a second. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Nay.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My money.
Any other department head comments?
Two thousand two hundred dollars.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just got a few things, trying to make it quick, guys.
Sure, take your time.
Um, first thing is, uh, we're asking for a motion to support, um, to push council for an additional appropriation for fuel and other ops to get us through the rest of the year. Um, I don't have an exact dollar amount. Um, Karen's working all the figures still.
Okay.
I would concern the council anyway, I would make a motion that you, uh, permission to approach the council.
Second.
Is, was that the only thing you had or did you have other things?
We've got some stuff just to tell you guys.
Okay, so, um, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Um, just a few things, um, we kind of started this year trying to do some employee recognitions and things of that nature. Um, just to let everyone know, uh, we've recently promoted, uh, Amanda Collins. She was recently an FTO at paramedic, uh, to a lieutenant and she'll begin that role on October eighth. Um, she'll be at the Laporte base. Um, we've had two of our EMTs both complete their paramedic program, um, takes the national registry. Um, right now they're doing their ride time, their internship and they hopefully within the next two weeks will be on their own. Um, those two are Nick Orzak and Angel Reed. Um, Richard Eddie, who's actually here today. He, uh, he completed a primary instructor course, um, so he's able to teach EMT classes and such, uh, throughout the state. Uh, he'll also be the third, um, primary instructor for the EMS. Um, and right now he's completed everything tested. He's finishing up his internship now, so we'd like to congratulate him. One big thing, um, some of you guys may have already heard, um, Laporte County EMS was named the twenty-twenty-four Paramedic Provider of the Year for the state of Indiana. Um, that's where Eric's at now. He's down at the conference the next few days. He's gonna, uh, receive the award Friday evening. For us, um, I'd like to thank, and Eric would like to thank Captain Jeff Rose for working on getting all this information and submitting it for us, putting it together. Um, this is the sixth time that Laporte County has received this award. Um, even Jeff and I were talking, this year seems to be a little more special, um, cause it's our fifty-year anniversary also. So, he says that's gonna be one he'll never forget, so.
Well, congratulations and congratulations to everybody. I mean, you guys are really doing a great job in that department. We really appreciate you.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Any other department heads? My good morning.
Amanda Laner's Health Department Director. Just a couple of things to update everybody. Our water lab is now open and operating. Um, our bacteria side is fully certified. Our chemistry side, um, is verbally confirmed. We're just waiting on our certificate, um, from the state. And then also remind everybody that our employee food clinics will be starting next week. So next Wednesday, the ninth, will be here in Laporte from eight to eleven in the morning and we'll be at the Michigan City office on the eleventh from one till three. And then back for our final clinic on the eighteenth in Laporte from one to three. So, if anybody has any questions, they can contact us at extension two-two zeros, two-two zero zero.
And a big shout out to your department as well. You guys really do a great job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other department heads?
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Cheryl from Building Maintenance, Director of Facilities. Um, uh, first I wanna let you guys know that, um, the two units at the museum, um, was installed. Um, our south unit is completely installed. Our north is already set in, brought in by the crane. And, um, it's just, we're waiting for the startup for that. So I just wanted to report that. Um, also, um, I would like to request permission to approach council for additional appropriation for, um, two of our accounts. One is the elevator account, account number two zero zero three one. Um, we will be shorting that count nine thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Um, I actually have two invoices that are needing to be paid right now, which is the fourth quarter of the contract for Otis and, which is four thousand six thirty-five. And also, we have repairs for elevators in the jail that come up to four thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is a total of nine thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. So, um, also I would like to add electric. We are going to be short this year also. Um, I am requesting not to exceed two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, um, to get us through to the end of the year, um, for our electrical needs and utilities.
Motion to approve request to go to the council.
I'll second that. Um, I do have a question about the electrical. Um, do you know roughly how much of that is, uh, utilities cost versus, um, uh, other maintenance costs or whatever the?
Um, utilities is a guesstimate, of course. Um, I could go as high as a hundred thousand for three more months. But I'm, I'm thinking, I'm just guessing maybe ninety. It's, it's kind of variable. That's why I, once I get the next coming bills coming in, I, I can maybe decrease that number. Um, so, yeah, um, and most of it is, um, for utilities. Uh, we also have other items that, such as, um, fire marshal, we had to do a lot of violations, um, correct a lot of violations at the fairgrounds. Um, and we're also working at the juvenile services center to correct those violations. So, um, that will also be coming out of electrical.
Okay, alright, um, yeah, and, and as I said, I second that, um, if, probably I would, I would assume the council would like to see that breakdown uh, when it go before them. So if you could have that available for them, appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Do we have any other department heads? Good morning.
Mike Paul and Building Commissioner, uh, just a couple of quick things. Um, we hope to begin and end a software transition by the end of the year. Um, a couple of you and council did attend a demo, uh, earlier this year, uh, with the vendor that we were thinking about going with. Um, this would, um, combine two different software programs that we're using now into one. And it would encompass, encompass the, uh, building permitting as well as code enforcement all under one. And it should also bring a Flint Stoney system up to, uh, modern times. You could be able to do a deck permit online, uh, more services, uh, offered online and streamline that, streamline that. Um, I do have a concern, our former GIS director was gonna help us in the transition to that. Now we don't have one. Um, that's a little bit of a hiccup. Um, but I think I have commitments from IT and assessor to help along with, uh, some technical people from the software vendor. So, uh, hopefully we're able to pull that together and make it work because we are gonna at least lose one of our vendors by, uh, the end of the year. And then their, their cost increases associated with that. I'd, I'd like to move that along without even renewing contracts and spending more money than we need to.
And I can tell you, we haven't given up on the GIS. We have been interviewing and we're moving, we're trying to move as quickly as we can with that position as well.
Great, thank you. Um, other than that, um, some good news.
Kind of tell us like, you know, with that, I, and I know that there's been a big increase with people coming. You're not getting the traffic that you normally came with the permits. Roughly how much of a percentage do you think are actually using the system currently? Because it has been operating.
Yeah, it, it fluctuates. I'm seeing a lot of, um, a lot of fluctuations. Um, I, I don't have papers with me to give you an average today, but I, I can, overall, I can tell you, uh, for the month of Au- August, and this does not answer the specific question, but we had eight new homes built worth, uh, an approximate value of two million five hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and forty-eight, uh, dollars combined total with a hundred and eighty-seven permits issued. I don't know how many of those were in person versus were done online though.
But you're a busy department.
Yeah, yeah, we, we're definitely busy, uh, both in all areas. Um, so, other than that, uh, some good news to report condemning, uh, we, I, I had a gap in condemning because, uh, the previous commissioner had condemned houses, put, uh, and properties and put liens on them. And we were getting the liens, uh, wiped from underneath us on certificate sales. Uh, that's nobody's fault. It's just property doesn't sell at a share sale or a tax sale, goes a certificate sale, wipes liens and then we get stuck. And, uh, uh, but recently we have recovered liens on some of our more recent, uh, condemnations. Uh, it allows us to replenish that account and allows us to do more condemning. So therefore, we're gonna have more cleanup.
So, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions while I'm up here? Have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other department heads? Anyone on Zoom?
Madam President, I have one thing, and I was, should have mentioned it while Mr. Beach was up here. I wanted to say thank you to the Laporte County EMS as well as E nine-one-one. Get to be on the receiving end of their services here over the last two months with my dad. The quality of care from EMS and the, and as well as nine-one-one, making sure the the calls got out there and dispatched were were greatly appreciated. Ultimately, you know, my dad did pass just here last month, but the the care of the coming out a couple of times and whatnot, you know, is nothing, nothing but good things to say about the department. And thank you, your caring and your devotion really, really speaks a lot. Thank you.
Anything else for department heads? There will be a matter that we will, and while Cheryl was up, or Ms. Listinsky was up, we should have probably talked about. And I believe the whole commission needs to know this. There are department head Sean Fagan in the prosecutor's office decided to go ahead and start locking and changing locks in the building, and this goes for all department heads. The commission needs to know when the locks are being changed. This is not a personality difference or anything like that. The reason why the commission needs to know is ultimately, the commission is responsible for all the buildings. When you change locks on your office, it's one thing to change FOB, but when you change the locks itself, there are lock boxes for the fire department outside all the buildings. If there is a fire, those lock boxes have to have the keys for all the offices. I guess some work orders were sent out, and then when the department couldn't access the department, they started firing off, and the whole rumor started that departments aren't doing their jobs again. And we do have to rely on each other for cooperation in these departments. We do need to make sure that proper keys are out there for our fire departments. We've had other departments come to us, and we understand the security. We've worked really well with the clerk's office. She's on Zoom right now. We understand that there are some departments that do need lock changes, and we work with them to make sure that we give them all the security that they need. I just ask for future, and we will resolve this issue, but I ask for future that if you're a department head and you feel that you need to change the locks, that you contact the commissioner's office so that we can do it the appropriate way. Thank you. Moving on to requests. First one is consider permission to approach the council to replace four vehicles, and that would be for the juvie center under Deion Campbell.
Motion to approve.
A second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consider travel permission for Assistant Director to Salt Lake City for a conference, and again, the juvenile center.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Old business, review burn ban with the executive order.
Good morning. Rob Savvy with Laporte County Emergency Management. The burn ordinance or burn ban expires today. I've talked with Randy Novak, who is chairman for the Port County Fire Chiefs Association. He's talked to several of the fire chiefs. Several of the farmers in the area. I know one spoke earlier. That, and also have talked with the National Weather Service. They sent out a fourteen-day precipitation outlook, which they're not expecting little if any rain within the next week and a half, two weeks. So the recommendation from the fire chiefs would be to extend that burn ban for another two weeks.
Would make a motion to extend our open burn ban for two more weeks.
Yeah, I'll second, and I did look up the state laws on that this morning, and it's really kind of, kind of weird that we would even be doing this, because we really our authority is superseded by local fire chiefs.
Correct.
So even if we didn't do this, the local fire chiefs actually have that authority.
Correct.
And what came up was with the pumpkin festival, they wanted to have fireworks at PNW. Reading our executive order, it does not address fireworks, but the fire chief in Westville, New Durham Township, which that's their authority.
Correct.
They have authority over us.
Yeah, anytime.
They're saying, no, it's not gonna happen, so unless, unless the fire department can work out a deal with PNW, it doesn't matter what we do.
Right, I mean, as far as it get, what it does, it kind of just gives a blanket for the fire chiefs to kind of, you know, gives them some backing, basically. So with fireworks, anytime that, you know, like if Laporte or, I mean, I know Cipio Township, if they do the fireworks out at the fairgrounds, they have to have a permit, and it has to be signed for the, by the fire chief, so it's really up to the fire chief to say whether they can have fireworks or not. So, you know.
They usually don't sign that until usually that day, right?
Well, they sign it ahead of time, because it has to go down the state, it has to be approved by the state, so, yeah, they always, it's usually, I don't know, Matt's here, I don't know how long. Okay, so.
You can up here. Just so the public can hear.
Let me see your smiling face.
Switching to Cipio Township, when we get it at the fairgrounds, we submit the permit way ahead of time, but then we actually don't sign it to the day of, when we can meet with the shooter to make sure all the insurance requirements and everything are made, so the permit's downstate, and then we sign it the day of and give it to the shooter.
Yeah, I feel bad for PNW that they've had this advertised. In fact, it's weird how this works out, that they were advertising for fireworks, and one of their sponsors is the fire department, correct?
Yeah. So that, like Rob said, that's local jurisdiction that the state fire marshal has put back on us over the years. They keep giving us more and more responsibilities, the local jurisdiction, and that's one of them, because they used to oversee a lot of that.
Ultimately, it'd be up to the chief to decide what what'll happen out there in the exact area surrounding PNW. As opposed to some of the fields and stuff around there. I know, I know where I'm at, and most of the other areas, even though we have gotten a decent amount of rain these past few days, the crops have dried out so much, even with the rain that's come down, it's not like it rehydrates the the plants and the crops that are there. You know, and their dried leaves and stuff, it's still a tinderbox out there in our fields, so even even though our grass may be looking a lot greener, there's still that threat, just simply because of how dried out the crops are this early in the year.
And we have not received too many calls on this, so it's it's been working pretty well. I think a lot of people is, you know, we send it out on a lot of different platforms. Everybody knows, and it seems like everybody's sticking to this ban, so.
Which is good. Thank you.
We appreciate it. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Moving on to new business, consider appointment for the Animal Shelter Advisory Board.
This came up because at the first of the year, we did appoint Dr. Dora from All Creature Features. Actually, I thought we had appointed All Creature Features, because they, Dr. Pink's come down sometimes, sometimes Dr. Foley. But and I talked to Dr. Pink's, which is now Dr. Pink's Rosenbaum, who's got married. They have been doing the service out there, so I I would make the motion to appoint Dr. Adrian Pink's Rosenbaum at All Creature Features to the advisory board.
I'll second that. Also, thank Dr. Dora for his sorry, I'll second that and also thank Dr. Dora for his service. I know I've also used him for many years, long before I became a commissioner as a, as a personal vet for our, the animals in our family, and yeah, thank you to him for his service.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then we had to add changing our December fourth meeting to December ninth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.